I would like to call the meeting of the Salem-Kaiser School Board back to order. We will now proceed with the agenda. Item three, flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, all board members are present. Are there any agenda modifications? Agenda modifications? Seeing none, we will move on. Action items, we have none. Number five, we have a report from the superintendent on the Oregon School Activities Association.
All right. I've invited Mr. Ramirez tonight to report on the OSAA process and our, some of our thoughts moving forward. And then you're going to hand it over to Mr. Dukopoulos after your part, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. I'm here to, again, to kind of recap the OSAA classification process. I was part of the committee. There was thirteen members on the committee, thirteen meetings over the course of a year. Our athletic directors, community members, our superintendent. School Board members have attended and testified at OSAA in Wilsonville. After all that, unfortunately, we were placed in a league with Bend. The league with Bend is three additional schools, so we have our, we have six comprehensive high schools. North is going to play 5A in the new time block next year. The other five plus three Bend schools will all be in a league together. The process was that the committee that I served on, as I talked to, was, makes a recommendation to the executive board. The executive board from that place can make modifications to the proposal, change it, send it back, whatever they see fit. And then from there, that is forwarded to the delegate assembly, which is made up of a league rep from every school, from every league around the state. I think, I believe there was forty-three people that voted on it. And again, that vote came to where we were placed in a league with Bend. That comes with a considerable cost in terms of transportation, substitutes, in terms of lost class time. Safety is a concern of ours as well. So we are already planning and thinking about, okay, if this, if this does move forward, what can we do? So we've already had some initial conversations by phone with our athletic directors and athletic directors from Bend. There are some sports where you have to play a league schedule, like we're in right now, football. You have to play one another to decide who gets the league spots, which you really can't get out of. One year you'd have to travel twice to Bend, the next year you'd only have to travel once. There are other creative options that we have, maybe not for a team sport, but we can do in individual sports. Like wrestling, you don't have to wrestle all year long against Bend schools. You only have to wrestle at the end at a district tournament. Same thing would be like for track. You don't have to run against one another all year long, only at district to determine who goes to state. So we're already in those conversations because obviously we want to minimize costs, minimize the amount of times we have to travel over the mountain, minimize the amount of substitutes that are in our buildings, because we want our, we want our kids and our teachers there. The great thing is Bend is in the same situation. They don't want their kids gone from school any more than we do. They don't want to travel over the mountain any more than we do, and they don't want their teachers gone. So we're all in alignment of what's going to be the most creative ways that we can get things done, that we can still determine who goes to the playoffs without having to play each other every single time and minimize that travel. So we're really looking into that. But I think, believe the first meeting with a face-to-face with Bend is November 2nd. So we're already in those conversations, trying to think of ways. We do play, you know, games during the week. While I was at before, because it was a long travel like this, actually even longer, we played, we did play some weekend games, some Saturdays. We'd play Friday evening, and then Saturday we'd start like at noon so that you could play those games and then still be home, hopefully at a reasonable time on Saturday evening. But those are the kind of ideas and things we're going to discuss to see how we can, again, minimize the amount of class time loss, minimize the cost, minimize family travel over and back. And obviously, safety is our number-one priority. There is no game or no activity nor event that we cannot cancel or reschedule. There's nothing that we have to do that can't be canceled. So there's, that'll be job one, obviously, to make sure that it is safe for our students to travel. And if determination is that it's not, then we won't go. And that's going to be clear direction to the A.D.s. They know that, and we have to cancel games now and then already. So that will be what we do going forward as we work with Bend. Other ideas, I'll just share with you really quick and I'll end. There's the opportunity for, to do three-way games as well, like we can do wrestling tournaments if we did wrestle like that, where we would wrestle more than one school at a time. Same thing with other events like track and tennis and individual sports where you don't have to just do a one-on-one matchup. You can do two and, or three-way events that will also help us cut back on, on missed class time and additional travel. And that is the end of my report, so I just wanted to give you kind of, again, the highlight of the process in terms of how it went down for the thirteen meetings. Just reinforce that we had athletic directors, our superintendent, myself, a board member testifying on behalf of the district, letting it be known that we were not interested in being aligned with Bend, that we didn't want to go with Bend. But unfortunately, we lost out on the vote and we were placed with Bend. Thank you. I'll pass it to you, Paul.
So I'm going to ask just a couple of questions. Who's the delegate assembly for our league? Where do they come from?
Our current rep is Suzie Orsborn from West Albany. The principal.
Okay, and so then she voted on behalf of our league?
She votes on behalf of the league.
Okay, and did, did her vote, was her vote a yes for the league?
I would have to look that up.
And then we have Mary Lou Boderman on the board, and her, her vote was?
Her vote was the one vote that was a no.
Okay.
So she is a member of the executive board, and her vote was a no vote, but the other twelve on the executive board voted yes.
So that was the only no vote?
That was the only no vote.
And in the reclassification, was it a unanimous decision within the reclassification decision? Or was it, it was consensus, right?
It was consensus, not unanimous. Because myself, obviously, I was not in favor of us putting, be in place with Bend. And the person from Bend abstained because they knew they were going to travel, no matter if it was to Salem, to East Portland, or to Southern Oregon, Bend was going to travel no matter what.
And just for the board, one of the reasons we wanted Larry to be there on the reclassification committee, we only get one 6A rep, but we knew if we got Larry in the room, there would be other proposals. And that's part of the reason we ended up with nineteen, nineteen proposals?
Ended up being, the twentieth one was the final one, yep.
Yeah, so.
Mr. Dukopoulos?
Thank you. I've been asked to talk about the history of reclassification with this district and also the process going forward. I have to say that I've been very impressed with how active the district has been in this process this time. Ten years ago is where I'd like to start and let the board know what, what happened when the Classification and Redistricting Committee decided near the very end of their deliberations to go from a 4A system to a 6A system of, 6A classification system. The reactions were similar to what you're hearing tonight. And so just by way of history, in 2004, OSAA proposed to move from a four to six-tier classification system. On September 15, 2005, the State Board of Education approved OSAA's amended constitution to allow them to do that. There was a statute at that time, Oregon revised statutes 339.430, that required the State Board to approve changes in the articles and constitution of OSAA. And OSAA came to the board and asked to change Article Nine, which talks about reclassification. They did not ask the State Board to amend Article Six, which actually had the numbers. Article Six had the cut numbers for what, the number of students who had to be in 6A, 5A, 4A, et cetera. But at any rate, the, at that time, the statute required the State Board to provide oversight to the Oregon School Activity Association and required OSAA to seek State Board approval to change any of its constitution or bylaws. So in October of 2005, the OSAA Delegate Assembly adopted the 6A classification system, and that's when the school district learned that it was in the same league as Redmond. This board, ten years ago, debated whether to appeal that decision. And that debate lasted in October into November, and the majority of the board, but not, but by no means unanimous, decided to appeal that decision. The main points were the same things we've heard tonight. Concern over travel time, loss of instructional time, safety of students on the road, and the budget impact. We banded together with Eugene and Medford, who, and they each had similar travel problems with the 6A classification system that they were put into. And, and all three school districts had a similar point. We all appealed to the State Board for review, arguing that the State Board never approved the criteria leading to the six classification system and the cutoff points. At that point, the State Board didn't even have administrative rules on how to hear an appeal, and so it took them about two months to figure out how to have a hearing. That happened from January, February, and by March 2006, we had a hearing before the State Board, and we argued that it violated the statute. And we won for a short time. I say that because the, the, the State Superintendent and the hearings officer ruled that, that OSAA had not gotten State Board approval for the 6A classification system. And although they had approval for, for some of what they had done, they had not approved Article Six. It was a technical argument, and, and we won on that point. The problem that resulted, though, was that OSAA came back to the State Board within a couple of weeks with the original version of Article Six, with the six classification systems and the cutoff point, I think 6A at the time was 1258. And the State Board approved Article Six. And right after that happened, the State Board ordered the State Superintendent to overturn her own ruling, which she did in about a week. And so we went from winning the case to having an adverse decision in the spring of, of 2006. We talked with the board at the time about whether to appeal that decision. The appeal was to the Oregon Court of Appeals. And this board and the boards of Eugene and Medford gave a thumbs up to, to going, the, the route of Court of Appeals' appeal. We argued that case on March 12, 2007, and the Court of Appeals was acutely aware that they needed to make a, a quick decision. You don't normally see those words together, Court of Appeals and quick decision, because it usually takes them about a year to render a decision. But they rendered a decision in two months and completely denied our appeals. Eugene ultimately sought review from the Oregon Supreme Court, but this board and, and the Medford board decided that enough was enough. And so the 6A system started. So that was our experience back in 2005, '06, and '07. What's, so now I go forward to today. The, this classification and districting committee met for one year and produced twenty drafts with a final recommendation dated September 28. The executive board approved that recommendation on October 16, and on the same day, the delegate assembly approved the change. That's an important date because you have thirty days to appeal from October 16. So let's talk about next steps. My starting point is that the way we were able to appeal the first decision ten years ago was under ORS 339.430. That was the statute that allowed the State Board of Education to have oversight over OSAA. That statute was repealed in 2011. We looked at the legislative history, and we see testimony from the Oregon Department of Education urging the legislature to repeal that statute because it had experienced a very contentious case some years earlier, and it didn't want to go through that experience again. Well, that contentious case was the one I just described to you. The legislature repealed that statute, and shortly thereafter, the Oregon Department of Education repealed the administrative rules that required them to have a process for an appeal. Long story short, there is no appeal to the Oregon Department of Education. That is gone. And that makes this situation decidedly worse from an appeal perspective than ten years ago. No question. OSAA is a unregulated, non-governmental entity. It's a private interscholastic activities association, and currently, there is no state oversight of it. It does allow, OSAA doesn't allow, does allow an appeal of decisions, including reclassification decisions under Rule Nine. And as I said, you can file an appeal within thirty days of October 16. But the point I want to make to the board is that you have to appeal a final determination, and you have to show that there's some kind of a violation of either a state law, a federal law, and an Oregon administrative rule, or OSAA's own rules. I don't believe there's a violation of state law. There are some, there are some legislative findings on what, what a school system should look like. It should be safe. It should conserve money. It should maximize instructional time. That's, there's no remedy under that statute. And I think that would be a real stretch for, for this district to somehow claim that those lofty legislative goals are a mandate for which the school district could bring a challenge. I don't think there's any federal law. When I think of violations of state or federal law, I think if OSAA had a rule that said, Greeks cannot, I'm a Greek, Greeks cannot participate in OSAA activities. Clearly discriminatory on its face. And the school district could challenge those kinds of decisions, but we don't have that kind of decision here. So I don't see violations of either state or federal law. The one administrative rule that we relied upon last time is now repealed. And so we look at OSAA's own rules. I don't see anything that jumps out. They had public meetings. Their own bylaws say that they have to have public meetings. It doesn't say where, or how long, or how many. They have to have received testimony from schools and interested parties. They did. They make, have to make recommendations to this executive board. They have to consider criteria among any others they deem relevant, but they don't have to weight any specific criteria. I remember the last, the last case we had ten years ago, they, they focused on safety, school size, expense, and loss of instructional time, and they put a premium on the enrollment numbers. They get to do that. There's no, there's nothing in the bylaws that requires them to weight these criteria in any particular ways. So ten years ago, after we won this case, and then after we lost this case, the State Superintendent required the district to go into mediation, and we sat with folks from Medford and Eugene, Salem, and from the OSAA with a big map of the state, and tried to come to some solution, and we were not able to. I think that, that the way OSAA looks at redistricting, they look at a map, and some people have to travel. And so when they're looking at the criteria of minimizing travel time, they're looking at the whole state. They're not looking at just one school district. That, that's what I learned ten years ago, and I suspect that's exactly how the committees did it. And so as your lawyer, I would say that the, even the process for appeal is somewhat doubtful to me. The, the appeal process, they say they're going to use a process under the Administrative Procedures Act, which is what you would do if you were challenging a public agency, but they're not a public agency. So I don't, I don't know what the appeal process would look like. Their, their own rules say that there'd be a hearings officer, and that the hearings officer's decision could be appealed to a circuit court. I don't know if circuit court has jurisdiction over this kind of a dispute. I guess we'd find out. But again, I wouldn't urge an appeal, even to OSAA. On, on this record, the, in my opinion, the, the likelihood of a successful appeal is exceedingly low. So that's, I've tried to show you what we did in 2005. We're under a completely different scenario now, and we don't have the advantage of 339.430, which makes us have a worse case this, right now, than we did ten years ago.
Jesse?
Okay, Paul, just to confirm, so if theoretically, let's say that we chose to appeal their decision. So what, what on grounds would we do so? I know you kind of touched on it, but I just wanted to reiterate. On what grounds would we be able to do so? And how strong of a case do you think that we would have?
Well, I think that what I've come up with so far is a statement in the law regulating school districts where the legislature says, here's what we want school systems to look like. We want them to be efficient. We want them to maximize their budgets, to minimize the loss of instructional time, and to, to have kids go safely to and from school. There's a list of about nineteen things that the legislature expects of school districts. There's not one word in there about interscholastic activities. This statute is aimed at the education side of what school districts do, not the co-curricular side. And so while we might argue that the, that the banned Salem classification makes it harder for us to provide the maximum instruction and costs us more money than we want it to, and creates some safety issues over the past, saying that, that it's a violation of law for, for OSAA to suggest this, since we're only a voluntary member, or schools are voluntary members, might be stretching the argument a bit. I, I have not heard anything so far that, where I would say this is, there's been any violation of OSAA rules. There's no administrative rule on OSAA. I mean, there used to be, but it's gone. So if, if the only thing we can point to is distance, expense, loss of instructional time, I think the response from a hearings officer is going to be, that's going to happen to someone in Oregon. In fact, many school districts, 6A all the way down to 1A, there will be people who travel more than others, who miss school more. I, I think that's, that would be the response you would get.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? And then, so board leadership will talk about whether we bring this board as an action item at our next meeting. And if we do at that point, we'll open it up for public testimony. This gives the public a chance to also understand what the appeal mechanism is and all of that, so.
Just one more comment contrasting ten years ago from right now. This is why I've said I've been impressed with how the administration has handled this because it's been very organized, very purposeful, and having, Larry, having you at these meetings has been so instrumental in, in helping us be informed along the way. And I think that's, that's been very helpful.
Okay. Thank you. Your own?
All right. So next item is our student achievement report. And with that, I will bring up Assistant Superintendent Kelly Carlisle. Are you going to start us off?
Thank you, Superintendent Perry. Good evening, Chair Kylo and Vice Chair Lee and members of the school board. This evening, our team of level directors will be sharing with you an overview of our student achievement for the past school year. And in order to make the best use of our time this evening, we will want to spend some time grabbing our remote. So that we can advance our slide. That didn't work. Okay.
Just for your, let me orient you to the packet. You'll have, you have the slides in a handout. You also have a number of other comprehensive data points, so we didn't go through every single one tonight and spend two hours with them. So we'll reference between the two, but mostly we'll go off the PowerPoint.
So to make the best use of our time this evening, we want to spend some time first describing and understanding growth as it relates to achievement, and then also discuss median growth percentiles. And we think this will help really illustrate what's going on behind the achievement data that you're seeing tonight. We will be reviewing achievement and growth data for all levels, as well as our graduation and dropout data. A reminder that that data, graduation and dropout, is for 2016. We anticipate that the 2017 results will come to us in January, as it usually does. Also, we will be sharing English learner achievement data later on at a meeting in the coming weeks. Along the way, we will be sharing the strategic work and the ongoing work of monitoring the data that helps us see whether students are growing at the pace needed in order to meet grade-level standards. Let's start by looking at who we are then and now, as we've done in the past. Just looking at a ten-year shift of our student enrollment data. And you can see that we've become a slightly larger school district and a slightly more diverse school. diverse school district over time. So we've gone from nearly 40,000 students to nearly 42,000 students in the last demographic breakdown that we, we did. And you can also see how our subgroups by ethnicity make up that composite. And the two largest shifts appear to be our students in the white and Hispanic populations. Another way of looking at our data, you can see that we've increased in the number of students and the percentage of students who live in poverty that we serve. We've identified more English learners. We've identified more students who we are supporting with special education services. And we've identified, identified a lower percentage of students that we describe as talented and gifted. Hopefully, these data points are helpful in describing for you the students that we are serving in our current reality as compared to 10 years ago. I'd like to invite Director Lisa Harlan up, who's going to talk with us a little bit about our district report card.
Kelly, are you taking questions? We have a question. Marty?
Just an easy question. The talented and gifted drop, does that have anything to do with how we measure who fits into that category? Or is that the same?
That's a great question, and I'd have to get back to you on that. Whether we've changed anything regarding our identification, or if we're just identifying a lower percentage of students, we can certainly get that information for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Kylo, Superintendent Perry and members of the board. I am going to talk a little bit about the district report card, what it says, what it means, how to interpret some of that data. And then my directors are going to go into specific data for elementary and some of the work that we've done there. So in your board packet, you will find the district report card. Starts on page seven, and I think it's back to front, and there are several pages there, six or so. And I just want to point out a couple of things. The first, you'll notice that there are leveled ratings for different content areas and different student groups. And the one thing I'd like for you to know is that the leveled ratings, all of those levels are not created equal. So a level one means that you are between the zero and fifth percentile statewide. So the state went from an old system of AYP, which would be to say, to use a track analogy, all of these students are going to run the 100 meters and they need to run it in 13 seconds. And we're going to tell you how many of your students ran it in 13 seconds or not. That was the old model. They either made it or they didn't. And the state shifted to a growth model to say, okay, not only will we tell you how many of your students ran it in 13 seconds, now we'll tell you the students who didn't or who did, how much they've improved or grown. So in this state, these leveled ratings are norm referenced, which means they line up schools in the state, students and their growth, to say, how did you fare compared to your peers, your academic peers? So if it's a 100-meter race, who came in first, who came in second, who came in third? So a level one rating means you were in the bottom zero to fifth percentile. Pretty slim. A level two, you're between the 16th and 14th percentiles, also pretty slim. A level three, between 15 and 44th percentile. A level four is the 45th percentile to the 90th. So a level four is a huge swath, 45th to the 90th. And a level five is the 90th to the 99th percentile. So I say that because all of these levels are not created equal. They're not equidistant between each other, nor do they represent what you would consider to be like a grade in A, B, C, D, or F. That's important to note. It's also important to note because to change your percentile is not like changing your percentage, nor is it changing your points. So if I'm running the 100 meters and, and I always get last, which is slightly true, I'm not a very fast runner, in order to get first, I not only have to run faster than I'm currently running it, because it takes me 20 seconds, I have to run faster than all of the other people I'm also racing against. Right? So knowing that in order to grow and to get a higher percentile, our students have to grow faster than their peers. Right? In order to make growth, in order to have a higher percentile, in order to get a higher rating, they have to grow faster than their peers. This is especially true for our students who are behind, who need to catch up. So I need for you to keep some of those things in mind as we present some data to you and as we talk more about achievement versus growth. So achievement's going to tell us who ran the 100 meters in 13 seconds, but our growth is going to tell us, hey, we've been doing these track workouts. We had 50 students who were running it in 20 seconds. After doing these workouts for a month, they're running it in 15 seconds now. Because the students will run it in 15 seconds before they're, they're going to be able to run it in 13. Right? So we now have some data about how kids are growing, and that's really important. It's also important to know that you will see growth increase before you see achievement increase. I will run the 100 meters in 15 seconds before I run it in 13 seconds. Right? So looking at growth indicators is super important because it's a leading, what we would call a leading indicator. Growth will happen first, and then achievement will happen. Growth is a leading indicator. Achievement is a lagging indicator. So one of the factors that we would use, in elementary specifically, would be kindergarten readiness assessment. So our kindergarten readiness assessment tells us how students are coming into kinder. And we know based on the data, multi-year data, that students in Salem-Kaiser come to school already behind their peers around the state. So knowing that to be true, we know that students, as they come in, have to grow faster than their peers around the state in order to catch up. So for us, we look at growth and median growth percentile as a leading indicator to say, what's the overall health of the system? What are places for opportunity and strength? So I want to call your attention now in your packet. Anytime you see blue headings, that's achievement. That's true for a district report card or an individual school report card. If you'll turn to page 10, those are growth details. Usually, the headings will come out in a tan color, and that's how you know that you're talking about growth. But I'd like to call your attention to median growth percentile. That's a factor that we pay attention to and chart the progress of pretty closely. And so I want to talk to you a little bit about what that means. So a growth percentile.
I want to make sure they're all on the same.
We're on page 10 in your data packet.
Yeah. Okay. I think everyone's there. I'm a good teacher. I have some good wait times, so I'll make sure. Okay.
So we look at median growth percentiles because this is what it tells us. So a growth percentile, each student's growth is compared every year. Their growth is determined by their own performance from the year before. So I took the test one year, I take the test the next year, and my performance and growth on that test is compared to my academic peers. So I'm given a growth percentile. So I'm going to use my friends who are game. I was going to make you guys do this, but I figured I would just make them instead. So they're students of mine, and I'm going to assign them what their growth percentile would be. So Director Price was in the 72nd percentile. Director Litchfield was in the 60th. You guys are going to be more than one person. Then there was, yep, Mr. Ramirez was in the 35th. Sorry, Larry. Mr. Beyondi was in the 34th, and Director Richards was in the 20th. So these are all students in my school. This was their growth from one year to the next compared to their peers. So then what they do to find your median, median means middle. So go ahead and line yourselves up in order. So the lowest.
This is going to be a test in and of itself, I think.
Yes. Perfect.
There you go. So glad you had them do it.
There's a part two to this too, but maybe I'll skip that. Okay. So the median is the exact middle. So the median in this case would be Director Ramirez. He's in the 35th percentile. So what a median growth percentile tells me is half of my class or my students or my school are growing slower than the median and half are growing faster than the median. This is important because what it tells me is if my students need to grow faster than their peers, I need the median to be at least the 50th. That tells me half of my students would be growing faster than their peers, half would be growing slower. Anything to 35th or below is considered very low growth. So they took it one year, right? And this was their growth percentile. But then they took it the next year, too. And Director Price, nicely done. She got the 75th. I'm just going to go down. Good job. Awesome. Wow. So if you'll hold your first one at the top, your second one on the bottom so that we can see. So in this year.
Nice, Larry.
So in.
You can look at it this way.
It is. In the second year, if I were to order them, Mr. Ramirez would again be the median at the 65th percentile. Right? But then what they do is they say, no, what's your combined? So if we combined all of those and took all of that into account, what would their combined median? What would the very middle number be for those two years? It would actually be the 60th. It wouldn't be the 35th from the year before, and it's not an average. It would be the 60th. So what that would tell us, the combined median growth, is that the students who were on the lower end made a lot of growth. And they did. Good job, Mr. Richards. Good job, Mr. Beyondi. So you guys can sit down. You've been such fair game. Thank you. So what that tells us is we need the majority of our schools to have the majority of their students growing faster than their peers. And when we look at growth percentiles and we look at combined growth percentiles, we can tell where we are in that system to ensure that our students are catching up. In order to catch up, you have to grow faster. So I appreciate you letting me nerd out a little bit. I am going to hand it over now to one of my colleagues to talk specifically about what that looks like in terms of elementary data and growth and achievement.
So this graph represents elementary reading achievement. The results for 2015-16 Smarter Balanced for Reading is on the left. The results on the right are from 2016-17. And then the district results are reported in blue, the state in red, just to orient you to the graph a little bit. When I look at this slide, I think about two things that we need to consider when looking at this data. First of all, students should be improving each year. So as they're receiving instruction, the percentage of students meeting standards should increase from third grade to fourth grade and to fifth grade. And so if you look in the right-hand side of this graphic, you can see that in third grade, that was true. 35% of students met the standard, 40% in fourth grade, and then 40%, 46% in fifth grade. So that's one thing that we're looking at. The second thing we're looking at is growth from one year to another with the same grade level group. For example, fourth graders in 2015-16 had a 41% meet level. The similar group of kids, so not identical, but a similar group of kids in the fifth grade in 16-17 had 46% of their students meeting on Smarter Balanced. So you can see trends over time in two ways. This next slide represents similar information only from math. So again, with math, we would hope that students gain and that student groups are gaining. And so for math, the two indicators of growth are not as strong as for English Language Arts reading.
The question?
Jim?
So we're not meeting our results policy. I'm looking at our results, results policy that says, we will grow, or the percentage of students in the following subgroups who meet or exceed state benchmarks in reading, writing, math, and English. I'm not seeing that data anywhere. I don't see it. I get it here, but that's not compared to the previous year. I understand the growth model that the state wants, but that's not our results policy. And I don't see us meeting our results policy. I don't see the data being presented that presents it in that way, either showing us where we're meeting or we're not meeting.
Right. And we have, usually the student achievement report comes in two parts.
Right.
And the second part on a later time is related to the results policy. And you get that, you've typically gotten that in two, two different meetings.
Right. But also part of our results policy was that you would be providing us systems and routines to demonstrate regular monitoring and then to ensure appropriate response. I'm not seeing that as well.
So if you, when they keep going, they will tell you what our three strategies are and also how are, how we're meeting on each of those strategies. And also in this data is a school-by-school look, which is one of the items that we want to look at is how, how are our schools doing?
So I guess my question is, under our results, our annual goal is to have an increase in the percentage of students in the following subgroups who meet or exceed the state benchmarks in reading, writing, science, math, and English language attainment by the major racial, ethnic groups in the district, students with disabilities, ELLs, economically disadvantaged, and students designated by the district as talented and gifted. Where is that data?
That data comes to you when we specifically report out on the results policy. And this is how we've done it since I've been here, where we do student achievement report, and then we have a follow-up session on the results policy, separate meeting.
So when will that data be available to the district?
January is usually when we.
Okay. If it's okay, I think I'll just go through and finish up the data, and then Sandy can talk about some of our initiatives and how we monitor those, and maybe some of the questions will be cleared up through that way, and then we can entertain questions at the end. So this slide uses the median growth percentiles that Lisa was talking about to measure the number of schools that have the majority of their students growing over the 50th percentile faster than their peers. And so if you look at English Language Arts on the left-hand side, that kind of teal-colored band represents in 15, 2015-16, we had 17 of our schools that had their median growth percentile above the 50th percentile. And so, and then in the following year, in 16-17, the, the dark blue band is representing that we increased that to 25 schools. And that's going from 40% of the schools over the 50th percentile to 60% of our elementary schools over the 50th percentile. So we are very encouraged by the growth in elementary schools in English Language Arts. And then another important fact is that we had nine additional schools in English Language Arts that had median growth percentiles between 45% and 49%. So just right there on the cusp. So if you take 25 plus nine additional schools, we're getting close to, well over the majority of our schools that are experiencing high levels of growth in their schools. So Sandy's going to talk about the three main initiatives for elementary schools and that we've been working on the past three years, and then the, the data that we look at to monitor our growth in those areas.
Okay. So what are we doing to get the growth that we've got that eventually soon will lead to better achievement? We are focusing on the same three initiatives we've been focused on for the last couple of years. And I'm going to show you in a moment some data that helps us track and monitor how the implementation of these initiatives is, are going. That's important because we know that we can make all kinds of.
years, and I'm gonna show you in a moment some data that helps us track and monitor how the implementation of these initiatives are going. That's important because we know that we can make all kinds of plans, but if kids aren't actually getting access to the practices that we know will make a difference, then it's not gonna make a difference. So it's important for us to monitor both the outcome data, the growth data, the achievement data, and how we're implementing. So the three areas of focus that we've focused on the last couple of years include literacy improvement. We implemented a new literacy curriculum. Through the implementation of that literacy curriculum, we knew that one curriculum wasn't going to give us everything we needed and we identified an additional piece. You'll see that ECRI, otherwise known as ECRI, which stands for Enhanced Core Reading Instruction, is a new component we've added to that literacy program for foundational reading skills. And it's tied directly to the Ready Gen materials. And that's being implemented this year. We are also continuing with our data teams PLCs. We know that, and in a moment I'll show you some information about why, teacher collective efficacy is so important and data teams is a way that helps us get to that in a structure that is monitorable. And it's through that work that teachers improve their instructional strategies, they collaborate and do systematic data analysis and decide on interventions for kids to continue to focus on their growth and overall achievement. And finally, we continue with our implementation of positive behavior interventions and supports. And you'll see some pretty remarkable data on the growth of implementation of that effort as well. So the first one, Focus for Elementary School Instruction, the Ready Gen, and now with the ECRI. We know that an aligned curriculum that addresses foundational skills and allows for quicker, more efficient identification of skill gaps and needed intervention is gonna help us continue to grow kids faster. Part of what we have to do in our district is accelerate student achievement, or student growth, in order to get to the level of achievement. And so there are a number of things we need to focus on in these terms to be sure that we're getting the most efficient use of our instructional time because it is limited. And so what you see with this data, as we track this, is in 15-16, the number of schools with growth over that 50th percentile, if you're over the 50th percentile in growth, it means you are outperforming your academic peers. That's important. That means we're catching, we're doing catch-up growth, not just one year's growth at a time. And so 40% of our schools had, the number of our schools that had growth over the 50th percentile compared to 16-17, where we have 60%. So in that one year, through the use of our aligned literacy curriculum, which is more than just the books, it's also all of the planning around the scope and sequence and the pacing guides, the projection maps, the focus on the most important standards that needed to be covered by unit, all of those pieces aligned, all of those pieces being worked together with teachers and data teams to get us that level of improvement in the number of schools reporting growth over 50th percentile. With PBIS implementation, what we see here, it's missing the slide. Did I? Nope. So one of the, one of the things we wanted to put out, to talk about with data teams is John Hattie's research around teacher collective efficacy. So just briefly, this is newer research from an Australian professor and researcher who has done a meta-analysis of meta-analyses over the past several years and then has rank-ordered the different effect sizes for influences that influence positively student achievement. And teacher collective efficacy is a very high effect size, 1.57, when .4 is the point at which we get one year's growth in one year's time. So by this research, we know teacher collective efficacy gives us three times as much growth if we're able to achieve it in a single year for our students. So in data teams, schools receiving coaching, either in a coaching cycle through onsite coaching or distance coaching, have increased from 17 in 15-16 to 42, which is all of our schools. So all of our schools are receiving coaching or some support to have their teams get better and better, to get more of that teacher collective efficacy focused on. Okay. Well, focused on.
We still, we have our slides, so.
Do you have other slides?
No, they have them in front of them.
You have them in front of you. Okay, so you're looking at this one?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. So that's what I'm talking about. You see that white line there is pointed to the .4. This research basically says that just about everything we do in school as teachers, as educators, works. Just about everything is positive. However, some things are better than others. And so the criteria or the cut point there is that .4 line. Everything above that is stuff that if we do, or influences if we have, that we can get even more growth. And again, this is based on literally tens of thousands of studies across the world over the past several years and is very rigorous mathematical calculations that he uses to get at this. So you see that collective efficacy at 1.57. Some of the other things in there are like feedback, giving specific evidence-based feedback, it's like a .7, all kinds of wonderful things in there. But one of the highest ones is teachers working together and not only believing, not only doing things together effectively, but believing that by doing the work together, they can move things forward faster. There it is. So you can see it's off the charts. That's one of the reasons we picked this one. The last thing to kind of give you a taste of how we monitor the implementation of, this is the PBIS graph that shows us, in 16-17, we had five schools that we said were in exploration. They weren't quite ready to implement, these are elementary schools now, and they needed to take a year to explore, answer the question for themselves, is this what we need? Do we need this? At the same time, in 16, in 15, 16-17, should be 15-16, we had 21 schools that were moving forward for tier-one training and implementing what that meant. We had, this year, we have six schools, so all of those five plus one that's continuing in tier-one, doing that tier-one piece. In 16-17, because we had some schools that went forward in year zero, which I shared with the board a couple of years ago, I showed you some data where we had some early adopters who were taking advantage of some trainings that were available to sort of move forward. So 17 of those schools were also doing tier-two training and implementation, which is for students who have needs that are a little bit more complicated in that tier-two area. This year, we have 24 schools doing tier-two training. And you can see in this year for tier-three, we have, where we had no schools looking at tier-three, which is where students who have needs that are, you know, at the tip-top of the triangle, if you will. It's really individualized plans for kids to be successful at school. We have 13 schools that are doing that training. We've gone way faster than we thought we would with schools embracing these practices, and it doesn't stop here. Our agreement was we would start with PBIS, get the foundation in to have a predictable, calm environment in the school where everyone's on the same page around what it looks like, what it sounds like. And from that, build the social-emotional learning, the equity work, all of those pieces then would be built on top of that solid foundation of common language, common understanding, and common practices for supporting positive behavior. Here's an example of two schools and their office discipline referrals per day, per month. So in the top-right corner, you see one graph for a school that has been implementing for two years. This is from our district. The green are last year's office discipline referrals per day, per month, and the blue is this year's. And you can notice that the office discipline referral rate is cut in about half for these first two months of the school year. So there's an improvement from the work they did in year one with tier-one as they move into the second year in terms of the number of office discipline referrals. The reason that's important is it's a measure that is an indicator of how things are going in the school. It's not the only measure. There are lots of other things that a principal, that a director would pay attention to, to make sure that things are improving. But this is one really important research-based indicator that tells us how things might be going in the school. In the lower-bottom area, you see another graph for a school that's been implementing for four years. And you'll notice in the third year, the orange bar, it bumps, it jumps. And then you see a little arrow there that says that there was a change in consecutive administration. Sometimes you'll see bumps and shifts when there are changes to a large number of staff or leadership, and it takes a while to kind of get things settled back in. And indeed, that did happen over the course of that year. But if you look at the last bar in each of those sets, the blue, it is back down in those first two months of the year to a level that has, in some cases, cut it by 75% the office discipline referrals. Again, not the only data we would look at, but certainly an indicator, an outcome indicator, that what we're doing is having a positive effect on that school. Another way to look at it is, this is one school's data, one of the reports you can pull from a system called SWISS that many of our schools are using. SWISS stands for School-Wide Information System and is exclusively about behavior data. And in this example, for this school, in the same period, September 4th to October 19th, so same beginning-of-the-year period for 15-16 compared to 16-17, by number of office discipline referrals for days of the week. So in 15-16, on Mondays, this school had 32 office discipline referrals in that period from September 4th to October 19th. In the next year, 16-17, they only had 16 in that same period. And if you look down that 16-17 row, I mean, column, and compare it in the row with its partner for the day of the week, you can see substantial improvement in the number of office discipline referrals by day per week in the second year of implementation. What does that mean on a practical level for a principal? It means the principal can be out in the building being the instructional leader more than being the disciplinarian. It means that we've built capacity in teachers and other staff in the building to deescalate behaviors, to provide an environment that's consistent and agreed upon, consistency with other staff members so that kids know what to expect and are more likely to meet those expectations. And that, again, gives more access to instructional minutes for students as well. And one last note about the benefit of this is some recent research shows that with a high level of implementation of PBIS in a school, there's a higher level of job satisfaction for staff and a much lower level of losing staff. So the retention rate actually for keeping staff goes up with a high level of implementation of PBIS. So those are our three initiatives that we're continuing to focus on. We know we need to continue to focus down on those things we think are gonna be the highest leverage, and we need to keep that focus for a sustained amount of time so people can really dig in and do that work. And we need to be monitoring not only the outcomes, achievement, growth, improvement, and behavior outcomes, but we also need to be looking at the implementation data. Is it, are we doing what we said we would do? So with that, is it time for questions for us or shall we go to the middle school?
Sure.
Can we go back to slides seven and eight? So this is, this is about the outcomes and the data. So I appreciate the conversation about, sorry, appreciate the conversation about the change in growth and the improvement in growth, but looking at this information and the data and looking across the state as well, I'd like us to have a conversation about the fact that we're below 50 percentile in elementary reading and language arts and math. And jumping ahead, looking at middle school and looking at high school data, you know, we definitely see higher numbers, but it's very concerning that at the elementary level, it's concerning statewide that we're, our goal is 50%. This, I don't, this just is incredibly frustrating, and it's not because of, you know, the district or lack of effort and the things that you've been describing. I just want us to have a serious conversation about the fact that we're below 50%. And, and you look from year-to-year, third grade to third grade the next year, fourth grade to fourth grade, fifth grade to fifth grade, we're not improving. Those numbers have gone down. So again, I appreciate the conversation about change in percentile and all of that, but when you look at the, you know, the yellow and the orange and the red, the one, two, and three, that's the majority. So, you know, it's, and I understand we're just, we're talking about data, but it's just frustrating that we're below 50%.
Absolutely.
And I want us to have that conversation versus the, this conversation about, you know, change in percentages.
The percentile, so the reason we pay attention to that is because we know that will change first. So we've said, okay, we agree, having percentage, achievement percentages as they are, not what we would want, not what we want for our kids, and obviously not the place where we want to be. But we know what will change first is growth. So we know if our students are coming in low, that we have to have them grow faster. So we've said, if this is the state of, current state of things, what are the three things that we will focus on, provide resource for, and support for schools to do that are the highest leverage activity that we can monitor early on so that we know if they're working or not? If we were working on a strategy or an initiative and we didn't see the growth coming pretty quickly, then we should stop. We should stop and try a different intervention or stop and try a different strategy. So in any system, robust system that's looking at the overall health, you should have a system that's looking at leading and lagging indicators because by the time you go year after year and your outcome data isn't changing, it's too late. You should have had a system that was looking early on at things that would tell you first. So, you know, the well-child check, we check their temperature, their this, their that. You have to have screeners early on to be able to tell if that's a strategy that's working or not. And so for us, we would expect the outcome data to come, absolutely. But long before that happens, we need to know if that strategy is effective or if we need to try a different strategy. So I think what we've tried to do here tonight is to illustrate for you some of the leading indicators that we're looking at to see, are those strategies working or not? Because if not, then we need to change them. So we've tried to present some data and a monitoring system for you to be able to tell that we're trying to monitor early on the efficacy because it's, you know, early on in the year. If we wait until June to say, oh, that didn't work, we just lost an entire year with kids.
Sure. It's really quick. So I understand that and I appreciate that, and that makes perfect sense, but I think part of this conversation that we have and that we, we have to have publicly is, again, where are we? And I just didn't hear that in the conversation. I hear the conversation about, you know, lagging and leading indicators and, and all of that, but I want us to have a conversation about why are we below 50% across? And, and that's, again, that's a statewide question, but.
So I want to just make a comment. I want to go back to Jim's comment about the results policy. One of the things I told the board that I thought was really important is that you should know how your, how schools are doing before they're identified in the bottom schools, which is, we did have focus schools. So that's part of the reason I've, I've pushed that we actually are sharing with you our, our monitoring system and our strategies. If that becomes a place that the board says, no, we don't want that, but I, I think But I, I think you want to know our strategies working. And I would actually point to math as a place where you should, we really have to think about, we know one of the issues with math is we don't have a guaranteed and viable curriculum for math. So when the budget process comes along, I'm going to ask you to prioritize math adoption, just like I asked to prioritize. So when you look at that, you should, we should all be, look and say, yes, that's the next thing we have to invest in. And the other thing I will tell you is the, the strategies around that, I mean, you'll get, you get pushed back at times about PBIS or master schedule and why do you have such a tight master's schedule? It's all for the reasons that we're, we don't believe we're performing where we need to be. And to tighten that up is important to us, especially at the elementary level. Part of the reason I, I believe we've had greater-than-average growth at the middle school level is because it was a very tight system. And, but again, when you push a tight system in a place that hasn't had that tight system, you do have people that are uncomfortable in that system. So it's, that's part of the reason we brought it forward. And again, we can, we can have that conversation as like, no, that's too much information for us. We just want to see achievement.
Go ahead.
So to follow up, so that, to clarify, that's not what I'm proposing or suggesting. I, again, I think that this information is incredibly valuable. I just want us to have a deeper discussion about reality, where we are, and how do we, long-term, I mean, we're seeing two years' worth of, worth of data. So that, that makes it a little more challenging, and I, I understand that. But, yeah, not, not to take away from the efforts and from the importance of this data, but a little more discussion about the fact that we are below fifty percent and that the majority of our subgroups are far below that.
And we actually agree with you, Sharon, so.
Jesse?
I'd like to say I agree, I agree with both of you, just the fact that, I mean, I don't think it's okay at all that we're that low. However, looking at the elementary scores versus like the middle school and high school scores, you'll notice the middle school and high school were just almost there, if not sometimes higher. And so what's reassuring to me is that I know that if we nail down elementary school, that the, what those same kids that are already beating kids in middle school and high school, we're going to be, wouldn't be on top of the game on, on everything. And so I really think if we focus on that, we can see a lot of success.
Anyone else at this point? Jim?
So I'll just voice a little frustration here. We're a policy governance board. We use our results policy to hold our superintendent accountable. I like all the data on growth, but really, doesn't matter to me. Matters to you guys. We are at the higher level as a board, looking at our results policy. And what I want to know is, are we going to meet our results policy? Will we grow from year to year with our grades in economically disadvantaged students? And the data I'm looking at, it doesn't look like it. Will we drop our graduation rate below the state level? No, we're not. Will we have a higher graduation rate or completion rate? No, we're not. The growth stuff is great, the state's there. That's not for this board to talk about. That's my own opinion. I'm one board member. What I've got to look at is the results policy that this board adopted and is going to hold our, our superintendent accountable for. And be honest, I had to dig to get that data. I did dig it in here, and I had to go to the Oregon Department of Education's website. And I'm not seeing that we are. I'm really not. Compared year to year, we're not doing it. Growth may be great, but we're not doing it year to year on the policy that we have to hold Kristi accountable for. And that's what I think this board needs to look at is, where are we at year to year with what we've got as a results policy for holding our superintendent accountable? Because we are a policy governance board. That's our results policy. That's what we adopted in June. It's what we hold everybody accountable for. And that's the data I want to see. The growth is a, is a state-level thing, and I get that. And I hate to kind of, to hang on this, but that's not useful information to me as a board member. It's useful that your programs seem to be working, but I got to look at the end data. That's my point.
So in your board packet on pages seven, eight, and nine are the achievement.
Which packet?
The data packet that you got. So pages seven, eight, and nine are achievement. Seven is elementary school. It did not increase. Eight is middle school. It did not increase. Nine is high school. It did increase. But for graduation rates and for dropout rates, graduation rate stayed the same, and I think dropout rate rose. But I think we'll have our middle school and high school directors address that. So that achievement data by subgroup is in your packets on seven, eight, and nine.
So unless there's an objection, I would like to take a five-minute break. So we will reconvene at twenty after seven.
The achievement scores from last year. And as the ladies described, blue is the district and red is the state. And so we're looking for trends that would, would reflect an upward trend. And my goal as a middle school director is, is, our mission is to foster the academic, social, emotional growth in every student, ensuring all students are on track for high school, graduation, college, and career readiness. So getting all of our eighth graders on track, ready to be successful in high school. And so one of the things I'm, I'm pleased with is the, this eighth grade, and I, one of the things I, I look to measure that is how are our eighth graders doing before we send them to high school? And so this is the first year in, in at least a decade where our eighth graders in language arts were ahead of the state in their achievement. So that was a cause for celebration. Math, similar trend looking for. And so you can see the comparison between fifteen sixteen and seventeen, sixteen seventeen. And again, we're able to be a little bit above the state with those eighth graders that we're sending to high school. Growth is the next chart, and the medium growth, median growth percentile again. And so we have, this is out of thirteen middle schools. And so for language arts, get to my right chart here. We had sixty-two percent of our schools were above, that's eight out of thirteen, were above the median growth score for language arts. And we had, all of the rest of the schools were between forty-five and forty-nine. So we had, the rest of the schools were right on the cusp of hitting that fifty percent mark. So that was something we'll be looking for. Help those schools get right, get over that, that mark. Seventy-seven percent for math. So again, pleased with the growth in, generally, in the middle schools. So we have a number of things that we're focusing on. Most of these are the same as what we've been doing in the last number of years. You'll see professional development with a focus on Avid and specifically Inquiry. That's a continuation of work that we've been doing. PBIS is listed there. Work as the, as the ladies mentioned, elementary. High school does this as well. A data team work is, is a really central piece of how we want to have staff work, working together, that collective efficacy, them looking at their students, looking at their instruction, and looking for the best ways to intervene for students. So we're continuing that work. Full implementation of PBIS, we're a little bit behind, maybe a year or more behind the elementary in their implementation. And so all schools and middle school will be, the, the goal will be to fully have tier one, you know, the first level of PBS, PBIS implementation by the end of this year. And I think we're on track to make sure that happens. Many schools are already launching into tier-two work. But a couple of the newer things this year are the top and the bottom bullet, actually. And I'll start with the bottom. The implementation of systematic, middle school-level-wide RTI system, response to intervention system. And that's support for students specific to reading and math, also to special education. And I think even in the future, we'll be talking about social-emotional learning and behavioral support as well. But making sure that all students who need that support are getting that support in a systematic way, that there's not a lottery for students, whether they get support or not. And so that's been a big effort. It continues to be a big effort as we launch into that work this year. Lots of learning across the level, with our leaders, with our teachers, supporting them in that process. Use of universal screeners to help monitor students, student progress at a number of different points during the year so we can know if we're, if we're being effective with, with students or not and being able to intervene if, if we're not. Another big, the last area I'll talk about is, on the top, is we moved to a seven-period day this year for a number of reasons. Interventions was one of the big drivers of that. With a six-period day, there's a very limited number of time slots that you can have for students to intervene, to intervene with students. Also to extend learning and provide more elective opportunities for students. So both of those were goals. And as you've heard quite a few times in the boardroom, we've talked about the fact that science is only a semester at the sixth and seventh grade, and we have a desire to move that to full year over time, hopefully with, with FTE budget availability of increased FTEs, we can start doing that. So the seven-period day gives us the flexibility to move in those directions. And you have some data in your packet. I don't think this is on a chart that would represent. If you look at that, you'll see, you'll see the numbers of students that are able to access electives, the numbers of students that are able to access PE, which is another one of those requirements that we have on us to give them, you know, increased PE minutes. You'll see lots more students in interventions, intervention classes. And so we're not having to make choices as drastically in the past where, you know, you need help in reading and math, but you know, we're just going to pick math, right? Now, we can actually support students in both of those areas and, and get them to progress with their peers. And so, and all that ties into that, those growth figures and what we're trying to do in all of our schools in terms of student growth.
Any questions for Matt? Sharon?
Just one really quick. The intervention options that were added for the seventh period, what is the percentage focus on math? Do you have any idea?
Well, you actually have the data. I don't have the data in front of me.
It's on page thirty in your packet. And I don't know if it's broken out by reading and math.
Oh, you know what? I don't know that it is. I think you're right. Oh, yeah, math intervention on the, on the second page of that. So you can see, we went from ten percent of students in intervention last year to twenty-eight percent. And in language arts, right below that, went from nine to thirty-three percent. And so that's really too many students. We don't want to really intervene on that many students. We want to reduce that number, but we want to start with the need and then, and then work to, to do that. And it's not only the intervention systems, but also the instruction itself and just the whole system, as we've been talking about, supporting the whole system and the growth of students all the way through it, so. Did, that answer your question?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Perfect.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Matt. Larry?
High schools, so we'll go through. Hopefully I'll hit the arrow correctly here. You can, on the left there, you will see reading scores from last year and this year. Last year, we were, obviously you can read the chart, one percent above. Feel good about, a little bit of growth there, two percent for us. The state held. So we're currently slightly up, but nothing too major in terms of report. But we are trending a little bit up, which is always encouraging. This is the one I'm really excited to share with you. Again, Sharon, as she stated, it is not, not great that we're at thirty-seven, but we were at thirty-one, so we had a good, a great growth there. And you see, as compared to the state, we flipped on them from going down two to up three. Really excited about that. Just a couple notes on that one that I'll explain quickly. We kind of, well, we definitely, one thing that we're doing is really focusing on math. We have a math coach that is out, working with teachers specifically that are, that are receptive. We don't coach anybody that isn't receptive. With Algebra I teams, with geometry teams, with Algebra II teams, all those are very, obviously those are all the areas that are part of this test. And you can see that it's starting to have an impact. And another big player in this, in terms of getting that kind of, you know, six percent giant jump in a year, is we're getting our students to take the tests. A lot of times, our kids are having test fatigue. They were taking language arts, S-Back. Then they were taking their AP or IB tests. And then it was time for math, S-Back, and they were saying, no, thank you. We'll just opt out. Well, we did some scheduling and put the math at the beginning of the testing window. And they still have their AP or IB and their language arts at the end. And we're also having conversations before we're handing over an opt-out form in terms of, these are the benefits, these are the things that, that can come from this. And the other part is, with that is, that big jump is some of our strongest math students were not taking the test because they were in the AP and the IB, and they did have that fatigue. So when it was time, we weren't having some of our strongest students take the test, and now they are. And I'm excited that we're getting a little more accurate representation of the work that's going on. Even though it's not where we want to be, I feel like we are making good growth in that area. Which brings to the growth side. You can see all the six comprehensive high schools in language arts are doing quite well. They're all at, at that pace that we want them to be in terms of growth. Math, even though we did flip on the state, we still have some growth to do and, and work to do in that area. So you see the language arts on the left and the math on the right. The focus on high school instruction. As some of you mentioned, you know, our, some of our student groups, our subgroup populations still are struggling. We're still working on that. And you can see that by the first bullet, in terms of using the Avid teaching strategies, especially the CRT, the culturally relevant teaching. I believe we had a hundred and eight staff members through the high school go through some, go through the training, either at Denver, at Summer Institute, or in, here in Salem, we had a training as well. So we're really focused on that, making sure we're getting kids connected to the instruction that we're giving. Professional development focused on instruction and engagement strategies. Again, critical thinking, I think, one thing that really switched, and you've heard this for a long time probably already, from Oaks to S-Back was the kind of thinking and the deeper thinking and the more critical skills that you need. So still having that transition, or not that transition, but still having those type of lessons that are going to challenge kids to think critically. And we, we don't know what the test will be next year. We don't, we don't know what that will be. What we know, that the standards will stay the same and that level of, of critical thinking will be necessary. I already touched on math, professional development a little bit with you, talking about the math slide in terms of our math coach going out and working with PLCs, which leads us to the next bullet. Again, as the other two levels spoke to, I won't belabor the point here, but we want our teachers working together and planning and reviewing data together and planning their instruction. We have also continued the partnership with EOS for Equal Opportunity Schools to get our underrepresented students in AP and IB courses. That continues to be a focus, and it continues to be a great pride point, I think, for the district to get those classrooms in AP and IB to look like the demographics of the school. And that will continue to be a focus. Another thing that's not on here that I need to mention would be CTE. We are working with high school success funds in terms of the Measure ninety-eight funds that we received. Again, with the Mark Perner work, that partnership that we have to get the right students in the right programs for the right reasons. You've all seen the data in terms of kids that are doing, that are in CTE programs and how well they do in terms of graduation rate. The more students we can get into those type of programs and hooked into school, add another program to come to, the more successful we're going to be. Graduation dropout rates here, we're, you look at the left there, the four-year cohort is basically holding steady. Five-year cohort, again, you know, within one percent. They're all very tight, a little, and five-year completion, again, within one percent. It's pretty stagnant there, and obviously we want to see some more growth there. We had you going to ask me a question, Mr. Kylo, but let me finish this last slide here. Dropout rates, same thing, we're what, point three, five higher than the state here in this area. Again, something that I'll speak to here in a second. Before we get to the questions on high school, I do want to give you one other piece of information. We're focusing on what we call the ABCs, attendance, behavior, and course success. So we're looking at anybody that is considered chronically absent, which means they have ninety percent, less than ninety percent attendance. In terms of behavior, we're looking at anybody at the, that is suspended out of school and tracking that data. And we're also looking at, like I said, the C is the course success. And in the course success, we're looking at core, core classes. Those are ones that generally keep students from graduating, math, language arts, science, social studies. That data is shared with principals every six weeks. We go over it. We look at everybody that's under ninety percent attendance. What are we doing? Who's making the calls? Who's, who's making connections with those kids and drawing them back into school? And get them- them on, on the right path in terms of behavior, out of school suspension. Why are they suspended? We have really, we've talked about this in other meetings, but the notion that because a student violated the drug or alcohol policy before they were going out, ten days of out of school suspension, which is huge, you're out of ten days out of school, you are going to be struggling when you come back. We have modified our practice there where it's an in-school suspension, we have what we call third millennium classroom, that they can take a, that course in in-school suspension and still be at school, still be getting their homework from their teachers, still having someone there to help them do the work. And just to highlight that point, in McKay, at McKay, from last year September to this year September, there's been a hundred and forty less days lost to out of school suspension, just in one month in one school, and primarily that's because of the drug and alcohol policy change, that now you're not getting sent out of school for ten days, you're getting in-school suspension where we can have you in, in school and actually help you. The course success is also tracked every six weeks, teachers do grades every six weeks, so we, again, who's failing math, who's failing language arts, science, social studies, who's meeting with those teachers, the vice principals or principal, whoever supervises that department, is having meetings with Y the S, what can we do, how do we partner with these students and families to get them success in the class, because obviously, if you don't get success in the class, you don't graduate. So Lisa earlier talked about leading and lagging indicators, I think the ABCs for us are the leading indicators, if you're gonna show up every day, if your behavior's in line, you're gonna have course success, it's gonna lead to this graduation, the lagging pub, the end part, that we, we gotta know up ahead how we're doing, and also the dropout and tracking students, and we have teams also of counselors, assistant principals, and staff that track any student that leaves the system, so that we can really tighten that timeline up and making connections with families. Now you can ask questions.
Questions? Sharon?
Larry, thank you very much. Going back to core classes, are we looking at math readiness in ninth grade, so I know we're testing out of eighth grade, is there a conversation between middle schools and high schools about whether or not students are ready to start Algebra I, or, so if they have to have their four, is it four, meeting their math requirements, if we're starting them as a freshman, semester one, are they ready to start in semester one as a freshman in math? Are they successful, or is that setting?
I'll try to, I'll try to answer as best I can, what I think you're getting at. We are having conversations definitely between middle school and high school math departments, and one thing is, and really, I guess Sharon, what I would say is, you only get credit towards graduation at Algebra I or above, so anything below that, we really don't offer because it would be a class that you're not getting credit for. So we have to have Algebra I at a level with the supports and the instruction that allows all kids to be successful. So it isn't just the entry point, it's what are we doing once we get you entered, and the lowest we can give you credit for at high school towards a diploma is Algebra I. So creating supports for that is what we're really working on.
Followed.
Yeah, Sharon.
So my understanding is there are some schools, though, that have chosen to, although the requirements have to start with Algebra I, there may be classes that, again, in that first semester as a freshman, getting them up to speed and ready for Algebra I versus starting them in Algebra I if they're not ready for that.
So, so the strategy has been, if you're not, if we know that's gonna be a struggle, if you're not quite where you're at, what we do is we give you some extra time, it's basically almost like a double block that they do at McKay, so you're getting extra time, so you're getting instruction, and almost like in college where you get that extra time to do that work, so that's kind of how we're addressing it.
But you, you mentioned McKay as example, are there, are other schools implementing that?
Definitely, there's, that's, that model has proven to be successful for us there, and other, other schools are very interested and have started that process of how, the, again, it's about resources, it's a lot of FTE when you start using a teacher, again, for the, for basically a support class, and they're not teaching another regular class that's for credit, you're double blocking the class, so you're using FTE, so it's, McKay is able to do that some because of title funds and can do some extra support where another school may not have that resource, and they have to decide how to, how to right-size that for their students.
Okay, anyone else? Jim?
So, this is a serious question, are we measuring the wrong things under our results Because I'm looking at all the department reports that we got, and a lot of it's on growth, and I understand that, I mean, I do get it, but that's not what our results policy says. So are me, are we measuring the wrong things? And I don't think we are with graduation rate dropout rate, I mean, that's important to our patrons, but are we measuring the wrong things as far as holding you accountable for what we gotta do? Because I'll be honest, Kristi, I'm looking here at page three and four of our report card, it doesn't look good. Now, growth looks okay when we're doing some growth models, so my question isn't facetious in nature. Are we measuring the wrong things, and are we gonna be able to see enough academic growth under our results policy that matters to kids, I guess is my question, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do, and it's a thought I have often, especially as I think of where kinders come in, and should we be, and you think about our students that are learning English, I think, and I think this is what I tried to get to with some of those additions to the results policy last year, I think as a board, you need to know, are we, do we have the right strategies, and that would be those growth indicators, are we monitoring those strategies, are we watching for schools that falter? And then, if we have all that in place, the achievement will come, but it will take time. PBIS is a seven, five to seven-year implementation. So if you're, if you're just waiting for the achievement, you may, because you're measuring me, you may need to change course before you see the achievement results, and that, then that means the whole organization changes strategies. I think what you see for the first time in a long time with elementary is a very tight set of strategies that have research behind them to improve practice and ultimately prove, improve achievement, so I, but the way you've written the results policy, I don't know that you'll see that quick enough, so the answer is maybe not.
And, and I don't want to change strategies, don't get me wrong, that's not our role. That's not our role.
No, well, I, I guess the strategy I was suggesting was a leadership strategy.
Yeah, and that, and I guess that's the question, because if we are looking at our elementary schools in particular, the achievement scores aren't there. The growth that we're expecting in our subgroups in doing your evaluation isn't there.
Correct.
And the grad rate and the dropout rate, it's not there. Are we measuring the wrong things? Because, you know, one of the things you put in here was that you're gonna develop a data system that will allow us to monitor based on third year, third grade reading, chronic absenteeism, I mean, are those the things we need to be looking at, rather than, and I admit it, it's been in our results policy for a long time.
For a long time.
Do we need to have an opportunity to discuss, is that something we need to change? Because it's, it's not there.
No, it's not there, and so the strategy is you change superintendence or, and change strategy, or, no.
I don't want to do that.
I know, but, no, but that's why I say, I don't think that, I think you need to know, are, do we have the right strategies in place, are we monitoring them, and do we believe by the research that achievement will come? Guaranteed and viable curriculum, it's there, I will, when you look at math, it's not there. And I'll tell you, we don't have the right math curriculum and the right structure in every single one of our elementary schools. So I guess the answer is, no, you're not, you're probably not measuring the right things. Even under your old policy, you, before I got here, you ended up with five schools that were focus schools.
Right.
So I think you have, you should be measuring, do we have a system in place, are we monitoring and adjusting based on the system? The question is, will third grade reading achievement ever be what you, well, is it what you should be measuring when you're allowing kids time to learn English? And that we have a bilingual strategy that we say is gonna take three to five years for kids to be proficient in English, to even begin to test well, we'll see the results at eighth grade. Do you want to insist it results on third grade when you know the research on bilingual education wouldn't say that's the right thing to do for English speakers, so.
And allowing the opt-out only exacerbates the issue.
It only exacerbates, yep.
So I'm just wondering, is it an opportunity for this board to potentially take a look at our results policy to say, because the data doesn't bear it out, although what, the strategies are gonna change those ultimately, but in the short term, that doesn't look good.
No.
In the long term, it looks better. I mean, high schools other than our math are doing pretty well, other than when you look at our grad rate and our dropout rate. Those continue to grow, the dropout continues to grow, and our grad rate's pretty stagnant, so.
Yep, so then you should be saying, what are the things we're gonna, what strategies are we gonna implement?
Right.
The CTE strategy is one of them.
Avid, a variety of things, right.
And, and how do you monitor that those are really happening with fidelity? I should be able to tell you that. I think it would get out the conversation, that's the right conversation for the board to have related to the results, it's, it's purely an achievement-driven results policy.
Yeah.
And you're, we have too diverse of a population for you to see that really soon in our elementary schools, and when you look at, I think the strategies where you, I, I just think of how hard our teachers are working in classrooms and how those data teams and PBIS is starting to take hold. We know that, you know, even, again, the reading curriculum, we know that's starting, so again, you switch leadership, so you switch strategies, or you measure the strategies.
And I guess that's what I would encourage us to do, is to take a look at that results policy, because it's been on achievement ever since I've been on the board.
Yep.
And there for a while, we were doing pretty well, but things caught up to us. I mean, the, the overall recession caught up to us, our inability to add back teachers, our inability to have the right curriculum in place, especially in math. I think it may be an opportunity for us to take a look at that, because, you know, looking at what we're supposed to look at.
I agree.
It doesn't look good.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, anyone else? Kathy?
So overall, it's, we're always shooting for the big broad number for the policy and what we're doing, and I think it's time that we looked at those kids that aren't hitting it, figured out why they aren't hitting it, and why they aren't engaged in it, and they aren't gonna be engaged in whatever policy you've chosen, and because of our staff limitations, we aren't helping them. We aren't getting to those, and that continues to drive our numbers down, I believe.
So I'll give you two responses to that and things to think about. One is, I think we, we have to look at a community-wide strategy on chronic absenteeism.
Yeah.
And it, and it's not about, it's not about everything we do, it's about what our community values, and we surround that. The second thing is, we are really taking a look at those Robert's programs this year, which I think is our next big thing to look at, to just, because those are our disengaged kids at times, and where do we get them sooner perhaps? And only, we'll only know that once we've really taken a hard look. That's been a model that's been in place for years, does really good things for kids, but.
For some kids.
For some kids, but it's, for other kids, it's too late, so I guess all that to say, I would agree.
Okay. Jesse?
Would we be able to get a report that shows two things? The first that I would like to see is just how many days we have in the school year versus other states, and then on top of that, I would also like to see, if we could get a report of like our attendance problem that we have with a lot of students, and then add the difference of the school days that we have against other states, plus the attendance problem, see how many days our students are missing per year in comparison to other states. Does that make sense?
It does, the chronic absenteeism information, really easy to pull. I believe some of our statewide organizations have done the work around comparisons to other states, and I would point to that. You really don't want me to spend my time on that.
Sure.
I don't think, it's because it's tedious, but I know our state, some of our statewide organizations have done that work.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing no more comments, anyone want to wrap something up, or are we done?
I think we've.
Okay, we have a listening session tomorrow night at North High School, for those of us who are assigned there.
Correct.
Okay, thank you all, and we'll see you in a couple weeks. We are adjourned.
Thank you.